And we're live.
Come on though. Sean, I think you're on mute. Sean. Can be.
Five, four, three, two, one.
Oh. Vocal.
Councilmember Bowman.
President.
Councilmember Farrelotto.
Here.
Councilmember Golumback.
Here.
Councilmember Noakowski.
President.
Council President Pridgen.
Ake.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Present.
President Pro Tem Scanlon.
Present.
Councilmember Wingo.
Present.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Here.
Congress President.
Stand for the pledge. Thank you so much. Our chaplain, Reverend Dr. Al Warner, will introduce our esteemed guest.
Thank you, Council President. It's an honor to be joined today by the most forever Michael W. Fisher. To give you just a bit of his background, a graduate of the University of Maryland. A degree in business and accounting. He was the controller for a psychiatric practice in Bethesda, Maryland. And felt a call into a full-time ministry. I loved it in his bio in 2005, he was appointed vicar general. For the apostolates where he oversaw the archdiocese ministries for education, ethnic ministries, social justice and service parish life. And youth ministry, all of those, it seems to me are quite relevant now that he is with us here in Buffalo. December first, 2020, Pope Francis appointed Bishop Michael William Fisher as the fifteenth bishop of Buffalo. Soon after his arrival here as the new bishop of the diocese of Buffalo. A group of us was invited to join him for Vespers. And it was a joy to be able to meet Bishop in person. And at that point, we began the discussion of having him open the console in our invocation time. He goes by Bishop Mike is his preferred title. It did say in your bio, sir, that you are a lifelong Baltimore Orioles fan, but you'd root for the Washington Nationals if they're not playing the O's. But the conflict now must be that actually Toronto Blue Jays are playing in Buffalo. So I'm not sure how you navigate those very choppy waters. Bishop Mike, it is a joy and a privilege to welcome you today to the Buffalo Common Council. Thank you for joining us, sir.
Thank you for for having me. I'm just an overall baseball fan. But it, but it's a, it's a real joy to be here. I'm growing to really love Buffalo and I've gotten to many parts of our Catholic dioceses here in the diocese of Buffalo. And I really love the city and it's again a joy to to get to know all of you and and to be with you today. So. So. Shall I open with a prayer?
Absolutely. Lead us, sir.
Okay. Let us pray. All-knowing and loving God, ruler of the universe and creator of all life. We call upon you this day and always to direct our paths and to guide our ways. We may walk always in your truth. And in our actions bear witness to your boundless love. Your care and concern for all people without bias or preference. Harden out our hearts to the cries of those who have no other recourse. And inspire us to work together towards solutions that bring about justice and equity. Especially for those who have long been denied. In our efforts to pass laws that promote the common good. May we consider first those whom society has cast aside or left behind. Knowing that in serving the least of those among us, we serve you. Enlighten our minds and hards that we may always seek common understanding. And dare to listen to those whose concerns are different from our own. Enable us to put aside resentment of every kind. To forgive as you have forgiven us. And always to take the first step toward others without stretched arms and with hearts eager to reconcile. May we be true and faithful stewards of all that you have entrusted to us and allowed us to oversee for a time. We pledge always to be mindful that the life we have and the bounty we enjoy is but a gift from you. Recognizing the true fulfillment is not measured by what we possess, but in what we give of ourselves to others. Inspire in us, each of us, true generosity of spirit. As servant leaders entrusted with authority to govern and decide for others. May we seek to accomplish that which is right and good. And which will endure as a testament to our motives long after our time here has passed. In all things and words and deeds, may we reflect your truth, which gives courage to the meek and defeats every falsehood. Your mercy, which heals the brokenhearted and writes every wrong. And your love, which knows no end and which gives purpose and joy to every moment of our lives. Let us never tire in pursuing your will. And in all things, may we hope in you, oh God, claiming the promise of your prophet Isaiah. Those who wait for the Lord shall renew their strength. They shall mount up with wings like eagles. They shall run and not be weary. They shall walk and not faint. From the rising of the sun to its setting, may your name be praised. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Bishop, and thank you for being with us with the common council. And welcome to the city of Buffalo. We are honored to have you. And many of the council members who are on our Roman Catholic. So if you need to send them there, if they need to send their tithes into their church, I'll make sure they do it. Thank you, Bishop.
I look forward to meeting all of you in person at some point. Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Councilmembers, any memorials? Councilmember Wingo.
It saddens me today to have to say this memoriam, but. I would like to ask the city of Buffalo to keep lifted in their thoughts and prayers. Mayor Clerk for the city of Buffalo and her husband Viola Bryant and Martin Bryant. Of whom mother passed away just yesterday morning. She fell asleep. But of course, we know as those who are in the faith, we don't fall asleep with no hope. She fell asleep, but she woke on the other side and the, and the arms of, and the arms of her father. So we thank God for her life and her legacy. She lived a fruitful eighty-one years. And we are praying that the Bryant family receives that peace from God that the word says surpasses all understanding. And with that, thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to memorialize this, this awesome and strong, strong woman in faith. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any others? Seeing no other, we always remember our men, women who have given their life for the freedom. Of our country and not just the freedom of our country, but for people across the world. We pause now for a moment of silence. Thank you so much. On a motion by Mr. Rivera, second by, on a motion by Councilmember Rivera, second by Councilmember Scanlon, the minutes of the stated meeting. Held on June eighth, twenty twenty-one, I approve. Councilmembers, you have late files before you, are there any objections to any of the late files before you? Seeing no objections, we will hear the entire agenda that is before us, not taking away your right to pause at any time to read an item you have not been able to. Are we going from the top majority meeting?
Yes, Mr. President.
All right.
Item number one, appoint Save Our Streets Coordinator.
Motion is sent to civil service.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number two, twenty twenty-one annual action plan.
Motion to send to finance.
Second by Councilmember Wingo.
Item number three, amend grassroots garden lease.
With no objections, motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Farrelotto.
Motion to approve items three, four, five, and six. And you can also approve items seven and eight.
Second stands. Vocal.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelotto.
Yes.
Councilmember Golumback.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera.
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yeah.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number nine, report of sale, two forty-four Maple.
Motion is sent to CD.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Item number ten, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two capital debt service fund.
Motion to send to finance.
Second by Councilmember Noakowski.
Item number eleven, contract with Zinger, print tax and user fee bills.
Motion to approve items eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. Twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four.
Second by Councilmember Golumback.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelotto.
Yes.
Councilmember Golumback.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera.
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yeah.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number twenty-five, appoint sublock attendant.
Motion to send to civil service.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number twenty-six, appoint consultant five.
Motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Farrelotto.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelotto.
Yes.
Councilmember Golumback.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera.
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number twenty-seven, appoint fire captain.
Motion is sent to civil service, items twenty-seven and twenty-eight.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Item number twenty-nine, food store license, twenty-two seventy-two Genesee.
Motion to send to legislation.
Second by Councilmember Noakowski.
Item number thirty, food store license eighty-three Grant Street.
Motion to approve items thirty and thirty-one.
Second by Councilmember Golumback.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelotto.
Yes.
Councilmember Golumback.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera.
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number thirty-two, new tire handler fifty-nine Stanislas.
Motion is sent to legislations, item thirty-two and thirty-three.
Second by Councilmember Noakowski.
Item number thirty-four, sidewalk cafe, two fifty Delaware F.
Item is open.
Majority leader, we can send that. With conditions, approve it with conditions.
Approve with conditions.
Second by Councilmember Scanlon.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelotto.
Yes.
Councilmember Golumback.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera.
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item thirty-five, sidewalk cafe, nine twenty-nine M one F.
This item is open, Delaware District.
Delaware District.
We would like this, we would like this item approved.
Motion to approve.
And you can approve thirty-six with conditions.
Motion, motion to approve items thirty-five and thirty-six with conditions.
And we probably can keep going.
Thirty, thirty-seven and thirty-eight.
Second by Councilmember Farrelotto.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelotto.
Yes.
Councilmember Golumback.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera.
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number thirty-nine, BSA budget, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two.
Motion to send to finance.
Second by President Pro Tem Scanlon.
Item number forty, liquor license notice, one fifty-five Chandler's, third suite.
Motion to receive and file items forty through forty-two.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number forty-three, appoint legislative aide.
Motion to adopt item forty-three and forty-four.
Councilmember Wingo and the dog.
Item number forty-five, appoint traffic agency clerk.
Motion to send to civil service.
Second by Councilmember Noakowski.
Item number forty-six, acknowledgement from Office of Canadian Prime Minister.
Motion is sent to CD.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Item number forty-seven, special use permit, twenty-two twenty-seven South Park for tobacco establishment.
Motion to send to legislation and city planning board, items forty-seven through forty-nine.
Second by Councilmember Wingo.
Submissions list, civil service, item one, appoint general planner.
Motion is to receive and file items one through and including nineteen.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Community, community development, item twenty. Eighty-two, eighty-four, eighty-eight, and ninety Monroe Street, DDA. Motion is to approve.
Second by the Majority Leader Rivera.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelotto.
Yes.
Councilmember Golumback.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera.
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number twenty-one, report of sale, one fifty-five Goulding. Motion is to receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Wingo.
Legislation, item twenty-two, food store license, twenty-one eighty-three Genesee.
Motion is to approve with conditions.
Second by Majority Leader Rivera.
Item twenty-three, petition to repave Ashwell Avenue.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Golumback.
Item number twenty-four, special use permit, eighteen ninety-three Niagara Street for tavern and outdoor dining.
Motion is to recommit.
Second by Councilmember Philip. I'm sorry, by Councilmember Noakowski.
Item number twenty-five, special use permit, nineteen eleven Seneca for tobacco establishment.
Can we? Mr. Chair, can we recommit that, please? What was that? Can we please recommit that? Thank you. Yes, motion is to recommit.
Motion is to recommit, second by Councilmember Scanlon.
Item number twenty-six, Noakowski ordinance amendment, chapter two sixty-one lead paint hazard.
Motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Noakowski.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelotto.
Yes.
Councilmember Golumback.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera.
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number twenty-seven. Pridgen, Wingo, ordinance amendment, section thirteen dash twenty-one, right to no law.
Motion to recommit.
Motion is to recommit, second by Councilmember Wingo. And as I stated in the meeting, there just needs to be a few adjustments that we want to make sure it gets.
Item number twenty-eight, Rivera ordinance amendment, chapter ninety-six, bonds and contracts, living wage.
Okay, if you could scroll down, also, there's a motion to approve twenty-eight. Twenty-nine, thirty with conditions. And thirty-one.
All right, second by the majority.
Excuse me, Karen Gordon, can you look at thirty, thirty says recommit to ledge? Am I seeing something different on mine?
Thirty is approved with conditions.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilmember Rivera.
Mr. Chair, we had the public hearing on the fifteenth and the neighbors and the applicants have met to discuss their concerns. We're going to approve with the conditions set by the planning board and we're also going to have a one-year sunset on that.
Thank you, sir. Those are the conditions. Do we do roll?
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelotto.
Yes.
Councilmember Golumback.
Is this including item number thirty-one?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm, I know yes on everything except for item number thirty-one, and I would like to speak on that, please.
Okay. We'll finish the roll and then we'll come back. Is that okay?
Sure, thank you.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera.
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Councilmember Golumback, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. Item number thirty-one, I voted no on. This was one, I believe, that indirectly came out of a possibly resolution that was sponsored by Mr. Franz Eck five or six years ago. In which the council asked for concerts that were being played on the waterfront to be moved away from the Marine Drive Apartments. I supported that resolution years ago. You know, with the idea that it would not be exclusively looking for one location for concerts to be played in the future. You know, I am against the idea of building this amphitheater on the waterfront. Now, I want to just clarify the position here. The concerns that I have is, you know, I don't believe that one hundred percent of our waterfront land should be utterly and completely passive. I do think that there needs to be tax revenue and recreational things for residents and tourists to do. I just don't believe that that is the right spot for an amphitheater. I'm curious as to what will happen with the park, the Ralph Wilson Park that we're getting funding for on the west side of Buffalo. And I just want to share one little anecdotal story. I voted against the casino coming into downtown Buffalo because one of the concerns I always have. Whenever I vote on something is the law of unintended consequences. And, you know, I'm always concerned, okay, you know, something's going to happen that we're not planning for, that we're not sure about. And I remember one of the downtown developers who told me that I was wrong to vote against the casino. Three years later ran into me and said, you know, I think you were right. And told me that since the casino had come to downtown Buffalo. That he was not able to get musical groups to come to his establishments for anything less than double what he had paid for five years earlier. I am concerned about the possibility of. You know, the unfortunate aspect that you're going to have people competing with one another with the waterfront. And that there might be some sort of unfair competitive edge that is there. So I'm just, I'm in the negative on this. I think that there should be someplace else that we should be looking at, you know, other parks, downtown Buffalo, et cetera. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Scanlon.
Thank you, Council President. This item is a special use permit for, among other things, live entertainment on the Outer Harbor. Coinciding with that request are the plans for the Erie Canal Harbor Development Corporation to construct an amphitheater. Where Terminal B currently stands. That project will, would remove the skin of that building. And build a stage adjacent to the remaining steel portion of the structure, which would remain there. And that project is going to open up that valuable portion of the Outer Harbor to the public on a regular basis. Which is currently blocked off. Residents will now have access to the water's edge there where they did not in the past because of that building and the condition it's in. Moving forward, this project is only going to take, Councilmember Golumback, I think makes a good point. That the Outer Harbor, there have to be some things going on out there that generate some sort of revenue and things of that nature. And provide things for people to do. This project's only going to take up five percent of the entire Outer Harbor. It's somewhere around nine acre, nine out of two hundred acres. And it will provide an extremely unique venue for live entertainment. All there, I know I've received complaints about some of the construction that will have to take place and elimination of some trees. But all, any trees that are going to be removed will be replaced at a three to one rate. So we're actually going to come out ahead in that regard. No other development is going to be taking place in that, in that location. Existing parking will be used. I know some people have been raising concerns about additional paving taking place and additional parking being set up. That is not the case. They will be existing, using the existing parking adjacent to Terminal A on the streets. And I believe they're actually negotiating with the state park to use some of that large parking lot as well for those events. In addition to this, the public now being able to access this, this area and the entertainment acts that'll take place. It's going to provide a tremendous location for other community activities and events hosted by nonprofits and other fundraising efforts. There will be a public amenities located throughout the location. So this is really going to open up that portion of the Outer Harbor for people. I want to thank Erie Canal Harbor Development for their leadership on the project and being so open and communicating with me throughout the project. And I also extremely want to thank each and every member of the Outer Harbor Advocate Group who has reached out to my office on the issue. I know. Whether they were in favor of the project, opposed to the project, they've absolutely made the project better in the end. By voicing their concerns and throughout the process, not just this process with the council, but in past years with Erie Canal Harbor Development. Hearing their voices definitely improved the project. And I look forward to continuing to work with them on items pertaining to the Outer Harbor in the future. So thank you.
Thank you, and I was vocal about my concerns also when they came before us. And one of the things, and you just mentioned it, Councilmember Scanlon, that I thought was important is that because it is a government entity. That there be an opportunity for community organizations for not-for-profits to utilize that space. And for the public to be able to utilize it when there is not a concert. You know, I lived down by Marine Drive for almost, well, over ten years. And know the problems of having the concerts over by Marine Drive and especially as that area becomes more populated. And I think people want to be able to utilize that area for the park. And, and I never felt that should have been a concert venue. It was the wrong place and it took away access. And our summers are only so long. So knowing that people will be able to go to the water's edge when there is not a concert. And that there will be opportunities for groups in our city to utilize it was really what was the game changer for me. So thank you for keeping me informed and everyone in the loop. Councilman Noakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do also want to, you know, thank my colleague Councilmember Scanlon, who really did a wonderful job. Talking to his colleagues and mitigating concerns that we had and educating us on this proposal. I do know that my residents that represent at Marine Drive will be inclined to be in favor of this. Because it moves the concert venues from directly next to them. And like the council member said, that this is nine acres on a totality of two hundred acres on the Outer Harbor. You know, it is zoned mixed use, so this is a permitted use within its own classifications. This is a special use permit for music. And, you know, I think that, you know, the council member also brought up a good point that although trees are being taken down, they're being replaced by three to one. And that addresses a lot of concerns that have been arisen to this council and especially to me via email. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. None other. Motion stands. Next item.
Resolutions, item fifty. Ally Turner fee waiver. Ally Turner fee waiver.
Motion to approve items fifty and fifty-one.
Second by council member Bowman.
Council member Bowman?
Yes.
Council member Farrelletto?
Yes.
Council member Galambe?
Yes.
Council member Noakowski?
Yes.
Council president Pridgen?
Yes.
Council member Rivera?
Yes.
Council member Scanlon?
Yes.
Council member Wingo?
Yes.
Council member Wyatt?
Yes.
Item number fifty-two, wave fees associated with domestic violence walk.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by council member Bowman.
Item number fifty-three, fee waiver for Shakespeare in Delaware Park.
Motion to approve items fifty-three and fifty-four.
Second by council member Farrelletto.
Council member Bowman?
Yes.
Council member Farrelletto?
Yes.
Council member Galambe?
Yes.
Council member Noakowski?
Yes.
Council president Pridgen?
Yes.
Council member Rivera?
Yes.
Council member Scanlon?
Yes.
Council member Wingo?
Yes.
Council member Wyatt?
Yes.
Item number fifty-five, commissioner of deeds, public duties.
Motion to adopt.
Second by council member Wingo.
Item number fifty-six, park rental and special event fees for Juneteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Motion to approve.
Second by council member Wingo.
Council member Bowman?
Yes.
Council member Farrelletto?
Yes.
Council member Galambe?
Yes.
Council member Noakowski?
Yes.
Council president Pridgen?
Yes.
Council member Rivera?
Yes.
Council member Scanlon?
Yes.
Council member Wingo?
Yes.
Council member Wyatt?
Yes.
Last item before us? Announcements?
Announcement of committee meetings. The following meetings are scheduled to be streamed live on www.facebook.com forward slash B F L O C C. Regular committees, committee on civil service, Tuesday, June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one at nine forty-five AM. Committee on Finance, following civil service, Tuesday, June twenty-ninth at ten AM. Committee on Legislation, Tuesday, June twenty-ninth at one PM. Committee on Community Development, Tuesday, June twenty-ninth at two PM.
Thank you, sir, and just so that we know, we are going to attempt to do a live meeting on July twenty-first. So that we can work out all of the kinks of our system so that when we return in September, we will know what needs to be done. We'll continue to utilize social media for our for our committee meeting, the last committee meeting in July. And we just wanted the public to know that all of those meetings will still be available on all of the social media platforms that we are currently on. I think that that's very important to continue. Any announcements?
That's July twentieth. Tuesday, July twentieth?
Yeah, I have an old map still on my desk here. Thank you. You're totally correct. Council members, Cam?
Thank you, council president. I just wanted to take one brief moment to wish a heartfelt congratulations to one of our colleagues who exchanged his marital vows this past Saturday with his lovely bride. Council member, council member Farrelletto and his wife Carrie exchanged their vows this past Saturday. So I just wanted to wish him and Carrie congratulations and all the best in their life together.
Councilman Farrelletto, is there anything you'd like to say?
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. We had a, we had a wonderful ceremony. We drove through your district of South Buffalo to get to the Basilica. It was wonderful. I appreciate, I appreciate the kind words and thank you very much.
Well, I wasn't going to tell it. I wasn't sure. So I'm glad that Chris, council member Scanlon did, and congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Any other announcements? Anybody else married or, you know, anything? All right, seeing no other hands up. Now we can see three people. I'm sorry, hearing no one else. Motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second by the newly married council member Joel Farrelletto. Thank you, everybody.